Ready. Del Meyer?
Here.
Eastling?
Here.
Clinkhammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with the citizen's input. That's confirmed, nobody on Zoom, nobody in the chamber. We'll roll on to the consent agenda, we have a motion.
So move.
Call roll please.
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Del Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
Consent agenda approved five zero, our first item is resolution twenty of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving change order number six for the Meadows Clubhouse renovation project.
Jeremy, are we expecting Andrew to join?
I told him, it's pretty straightforward. Change order six has three parts. First two of those parts were completed, the work that was done by all seasons. First was some refrigerant lines that they found in a wall from the one of the AC units up in the attic that had to be rerouted. And then the second was they had to move some ductwork from furnace number five in the lower level. So the plumber could run the water lines from the restrooms to kitchen. Those items have already been completed. A third piece of change order six is lens replacement. On the bar upstairs, there's some LED backlighting on both the east and west side of the wall. That sits in kind of like a little bit of a recess. And in the original design, we were hoping that we're not going to have to cover the LED lights. But if you, there's a pretty sizable amount, especially when you walk right in. You'll kind of see where that LED track is, so we're putting a plastic lens over that, so you're not looking directly into those bright LED lights or it's not catching your eye right when you come into the building. So that's that part for west ball. All three items on change order six total is three thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second, change order number six in discussion. Call roll please.
Clinkhammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
Del Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
That's approved five zero, the second item is resolution twenty-one to twenty-three. Resolution approving pay up number six for the Meadows Clubhouse reconstruction project.
All I know is that this is for work that is already completed. If you want a brief project update, I can give you that, I mean, everything is on schedule. We still have that April first date, you know, targeted, so I know it's going to be, it's going to be tight. Their crews have been increasing in size as we go on, so it's been good. I get in there almost daily, check on it.
And I apologize, Jeremy asked me, I said, okay, but I just couldn't see paying the architect for, I mean, if, and if you don't want, I never thought about, you know, the pay app, but since they're on target and it's work already done, we just chose not to pay Andrew to join the meeting.
And it has, I mean, it has Andrew's stamp on it and it's got Allen's stamp on it too.
Do you want him to?
They've reviewed it and approved it. I'm just presenting it, save a few bucks.
See this contract today with change orders without the change orders you just approved is two million one thirty-three nine thirty-six and the total completed stored to date is one million twenty-three five seventy-four fifty-six. So as far as where we are for what the contract is and billing, we're really reflecting about fifty percent complete.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
And motion second, any final discussion? Call roll.
Clinkhammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
Del Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
That's approved five zero, thank you Jeremy, bring me leftovers.
Leftovers.
Apparently he gets to go out with his wife. What about your wife? Alrighty, next item is ordinance one of twenty twenty-three in ordinance amending chapter ninety-five sanitary sewer systems repealing provisions inconsistent therewith.
We talked about this at our budget meeting and what we're doing here is looking at a about two dollar increase on the base fee. And as requested from council, I did do a comparison of the Asbury utility rates in comparison to the Duke utility rates. Our water rate is a bit higher, but when it looks at sewer, refuse, stormwater, all of those rates are lower than the city of Dubuque. And if we're looking at an average monthly billing, and for that I use, I based it on six hundred cubic feet of consumption. The estimated annual savings for the city of Asbury is sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents a year. Also, you know, just given a comparison to the council, you know, if we keep the nine dollar per thousand rate, if Dubuque is looking at nine dollars and ninety cents per thousand, you know, another hundred and two dollars, so right now, in a two hundred thousand dollar house with a average, you know, use of six hundred cubic feet of consumption on utilities, you know, an Asbury resident would have a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents annual savings over what the city of Dubuque. So the consideration of it, Asbury's more expensive, you know, I guess it's all relative as to, you know, the price of the house you're living in and how much, you know, you are consuming, you know, amongst the utilities. But six hundred cubic feet is pretty average for a city of Asbury residents. But in addition to the two dollars for the sanitary sewer, we're also looking to do a ten percent increase on the usage. And when we looked at the larger facilities such as the Hawkeye Care Facility and Luther Manor, they would likely see their sewer bill increase about fifty dollars per month. So that kind of gives you, you know, indication, those are, those are pretty high users for the city. So, you know, the low end of residential user, you're looking at, you know, two dollars a month and somebody that's using to get significant sums like fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve number one of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second. I'll try to jump in on this, Bob, but I want to go back to the manually mailed bills again. That's costing us eight thousand dollars a year to mail those in. We have five hundred people out of twenty-two hundred actually take the e-billing. What I was going to ask is if you could raise it two fifty and give a fifty cent discount for using the e-billing. Again, I just, I don't understand why we have to spend eight thousand dollars in this day and age. We got thirteen hundred people in ACH are willing to let the money come out of their accounts, I'd say, but they can't open an email, it doesn't make sense to me that we continue to mail out that many. And then the other thing with that, sorry Russ, real quick, is the mail delivery has not been, you know, great. We get a lot of complaints about not receiving the bills and like, well, then get an email. But again, I brought this up kind of on a whim at the last meeting, I went and did my homework, bringing on, I don't care, I do e-billing either way, but it's a thought.
Instead of raising the fifty cents, could we just, wouldn't we, wouldn't we make up for it by the savings, so we wouldn't have to raise the fifty cents? We'd, the eight thousand dollars would pay the fifty cents.
Technically would, yeah, if we gave them a fifty cent discount, is that what you're saying, or, yeah. I don't know, again, it just, it just, it is petty on my part even bringing it up, but it's eight thousand dollars and you guys have questioned smaller items, which rightfully so you should, and I'm just saying, we're squeezing every penny this year, here's eight thousand dollars and we're not going to get ready to sign up, I understand that, but anyhow. We can wait until next year.
What do you recommend, a transition period or what, how are you going to do it?
I don't know.
Maybe, maybe what we could do is instead of changing it right now, we could, we could do some kind of a push or marketing effort to get it to go, but, or maybe just say, you know, maybe we got to save fifty cents or a dollar.
I think I told you, I took a picture of Carissa sitting at her desk and the stack of bills was this high, and we, and we got some, we did, we did a drawing for the ACH, like gave away tablets and things. So, all right, we'll try to educate and maybe we just have discussion next year when we're not, maybe we don't have to raise it next year, we can do something then. But to your point, like, so two dollars, some people will say, oh my God, two bucks, okay, then save yourself fifty cents, right? Two dollars is huge, fifty cents is twenty-five percent of that, so if you really want to save money and two dollars bothers you, then sign up for the e-billing and save yourself fifty cents. I mean, you kind of contradict yourself.
I think it's this change.
I'm down, do what you want, I just wanted to close the loop on my facts.
Just one quick question I had, Beth, this is, this ordinance goes into effect July first?
Just be the first reading, we're not looking for council to, you know, this is an ordinance, so it takes three readings. So we set these up that these are all going to be, have a second reading. So then we'll do, we'll start a communication campaign, so, you know, people know what's, you know, coming up.
So if council decided later to give a fifty cent discount, does that need to go on the ordinance?
Would be, yeah, that would be part of the fee structure, so we would have to bring that back as well.
All right, I don't want to drag it on. Any other discussion? Okay, no discussion. Call roll please.
Clinkhammer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rice?
Hi.
Del Meyer?
Hi.
Eastling?
Hi.
So this is first reading, then I don't see anything about waiving the statutory need to ask, well, I need to ask, right? Yeah, is there a motion to waive the statutory ruling? Okay. We did, we, okay. That's approved five zero, then we'll move on to the second item, a second ordinance is two oh twenty-three in ordinance amending chapter one fifty-two stormwater management system of facilities repealing provisions inconsistent therewith.
Again, this is consistent with what we talked about during our budget work session, looking to raise stormwater fee a dollar per residential customer. This also is less than the city of Dubuque charges and we have not changed the rate in stormwater since two thousand seventeen. Recommendation is to approve the ordinance for the first reading with the dollar.
Beth, just one question I have is, like, the large facilities like Hawkeye and how do they pay for stormwater? Because they have a lot of parking lots and things like that, how do they get charged for stormwater?
Charge per square feet, so in looking at this ordinance, the residential will go from seven to eight dollars, but, you know, what goes with parking lots, we did it all with, you know, basically per square foot on bigger properties like Dupaco, like, you know, where the Eagles Club is, Hawkeye still, based on their square footage. So if you were ten dollars, you're going to fifteen, if you're twenty, you're going to twenty-five, if you're greater than a hundred, you're going to three thirty from three hundred. These facilities fall into that greater than a hundred thousand. Can look that up before. Remember, I looked it up. Hundred thousand.
I know this past weekend I was looking at this and it got me thinking, there can only be a handful of facilities that fall into that, and that's where my curiosity.
And it's just Luther Manor and Hawkeye that hit that hundred thousand?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second, other discussion? Call roll.
Clinkhammer?
Hi.
Miller? Rice?
Hi.
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 That's approved five zero, and we have ordinance three of twenty, I'm sorry, is there a motion to waive the statutory on ordinance two? Yeah. Ordinance three of twenty twenty-three is an ordinance amending chapter one zero five collection of solid waste, recyclable materials and yard waste in chapter one oh six burning heretofore code of ordinances.
Again, we're looking at the. Yard waste portions, if I have Joe here, or just, you know, if you have any questions. We've had several, we've had some issues with how people use containers and don't have, you know, they use containers that really shouldn't be used and what they put in the containers. And so the word bag is probably the effect here that if you want to use yard waste, you now have to use a yard waste bag for all of your yard waste materials. You can't use your recycle bin, you can't use your garbage can. You still are able to, if you have bundles, you can still use the bundles and they still need to meet the weight requirements. There will no longer be a annual yard waste tag. The yard waste fee per tag is still two fifty, we're not changing that. But the other big thing is we're proposing to do away with the two free yard waste in the spring and the two free yard waste in the fall. And in lieu of that, the city will allow, per this ordinance, twenty-four yard waste tags that people can use all year round. That we help, we feel will help in some of this where, especially in the fall, people will gather their yard waste, let's say they, they might have a bag full in August and they'll leave it sit outside until November and then, you know, the guys have to go and pick it up and it's not pretty. So we feel if, you know, they can use these tags all year round, that may help with some of this push where people, you know, save it up, you know, until the end of the year. And it still gives people the opportunity to have, you know, free yard waste basically all year round.
Beth, just a question, when we eliminate the fifty dollar fee for people that, that annual fee, how much revenue do we lose by not doing that? No, I thought they, I thought that the twenty-four free tags would replace their fifty dollars and so we would lose the fifty dollars is what I was thinking.
I don't, I don't anticipate that, I think the people that get the annual tag are ones that, you know, they're bagging their grass every week and then they put it out to be picked up on a weekly basis. That's why they get that annual tag.
And then my second, my next question is, will the, or the pickup period still start on the same date and end on the same date, even though it's not, first two aren't free and the last two aren't free?
Yeah, the yard waste and the yard waste period will still be April through November. Right. Still be there and they'll still need a tag for the Christmas tree.
The, the one last question I have then is mechanically, how do we calculate the payment to Dittmer? Because do they track it in the trucks on how many they pick up or do we, they just charge us for the amount, the tonnage that they take to the dump? And so wherever money comes in from the tags, we keep?
And the, you know, refuse pickup.
We've talked to a few people and they were not happy with the twenty-four, they wanted to go thirty because that would be halfway in between the, you know, twenty in the spring and twenty in the fall. They need them.
I didn't hear anything like that, but the one question that I had was, how are we going to transition from this? There needs to be an education period, I mean, I'm, I don't go online and read all the new ordinances. So what do we have in place for that? And maybe we've already discussed that and I've forgotten.
Two, one, it'll be in the next newsletter, for sure. Two, we'll communicate it out with, you know, Facebook and all of our, you know, channels, we'll probably even do, you know, PSA where we'll send it to the newspaper. We'll do everything we can to, we'll use our email channels, we'll use everything we can to get it out there. And then when we, you know, kind of get to the end here, you know, we're going to try and start those, I want to encourage just to start those huddles that, you know, maybe one of our next huddles is, you know, where people can come in and talk about the council agenda. You know, I want to do the next one on the budget, but maybe the one after that's on, you know, utilities, still somewhat budget related, but.
This ordinance would go into effect then before July first?
We would put all the yard waste effective as soon as the ordinance is passed, but the rate increase would not be effective until July first.
Then one last question is, with our contract with Dittmer right now, does it, does the contract specify the two free ones? Or, because we're going to be taking, your office is going to be taking on the responsibility now of coordinating, as Jim alluded to, and the work administering all those extra tags. What is the contract, is this their request, is it a request from Dittmer or is it part of the contract?
We have two, we have the two free yard waste, I think it's part of the contract. And like I said, we have issues on Dittmer's part, we have issues on, you know, the trash has become a, and that's why Joe here tonight too. It appears that every, you know, Thursday after trash pickup, it's, you know, our phones ring off the hook. You know, as far as, you know, this didn't get picked up, that didn't get picked up, you know, you know, it comes with yard waste, I forgot to pick up my yard waste. I guess we're hoping with this that we can, you know, streamline it a little bit to, you know, make it consistent, that's why we're using bags. One of the complaints that happens with the yard waste especially is, you know, they make them too heavy, you know, they're, they're the weight, they're over the weight limit, you know, and those guys have to pick them up.
One suggestion along with the heavy part, I had mentioned this earlier, but my daughter in Pleasant Hill, they actually have three dumpsters that they can get. They get, they can get a third dumpster with a green lid on it for yard waste, so everything's picked up mechanically and then there's no problem with the weight. I mean, at some point down the road, we may consider it an extra can and if people want to pay for it, and, and then everything would be mechanical potentially.
And that's something we could, you know, talk about and consider, I don't know if you do yard waste with any other community side of it?
No, I don't. I think even though, even if you go to bags though, the leaves all come down in the fall, that's why, that's why there's a lot more bags though in the fall, I think you're still going to have a lot more stuff in the fall. But if they have tags on them, do you pick them up? So like, now are we limiting them to ten, even if they have tags on them?
Yes, even now we limit it to ten bags per week. And that's been enforced before, so, yeah, we're not amending the ordinance to say ten bags per week, that has been in effect.
I think this is a good process to start with, if this doesn't work, we have to go to another container, we'll find that out down the road, but this makes the most sense right now and then we'll wait and see. Like any ordinance, we can change it at will, so.
I think, Beth, the only thing I would ask is if you guys keep track of how much additional time it takes in the office to administer all of the, you know, getting twenty-four tags out, two thousand, potentially two thousand, not that many will get them, but, you know.
They asked me and they said they can handle it, so, referring to staff. I hear you, Beth's like, you okay, I said, I'm just thinking it might be a lot of overheads, no, we're fine, so. I'm not up there at the window, so.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number three of twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, seconded, other discussion?
I think two a month is good right now.
Say that again, Bob, sorry.
Two a month, twenty-four, you know, you've got four months, you're not using them. I mean, I have neighbors with a lot of trees, I get a lot of branches, whatever, I'm waiting to see how it's going to affect me, but, and I know Russ has trees with a lot of leaves, so I don't think you're going to find many more better, worse than his yard or mine.
I, I kind of am of the opinion that we wait and see, because as Bob had already alluded to, we get to change this, if we find that twenty, twenty-five isn't doing the trick and we need to bump it up, then we can do that too, but let's, let's see how this works.
I, I think you're going to run into the same issue that you run into with bags, is if you have a limited ten, I've seen a lot of people go to the neighbors and put ten more in the neighbor's driveway. I mean, you see it, I mean, you could have ten bags, three houses in a row and you could still have the same thing because you have your neighbor go pick up their twenty-four tags that they're not going to use and do the same thing, so.
Do you DNA test on the leaves?
I think in the next newsletter, there's a lot of things we can probably remind people about, it's like, I drove down the street tonight and this trash cans all have arrows pointing this side of the street and I saw two different sets where they got the wheels out toward the street.
Yeah, okay, so any other discussion? Call roll please.
Hi.
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 That's approved five zero, and I assume again, nobody wants to waive the statutory, three readings? Okay, public input, nobody on Zoom, so we will move on to the reports. Any comments or a motion to accept?
Wanted to go down to E update, the council strategic plan, let you know that. Um, let you know that, uh, we are now able to add the recordings of the meetings on board docs. So what if you, tomorrow, when you go out and look at this meeting, you'll be able to see the recording for it. Um, also I'd like to, you know, do a, start that round table with residents that we talked about, that they can come in and discuss pertinent city issues with, you know, council. Um, suggesting possibly eleven AM on the twenty-eighth, um, it could be noon. That might be another good time to do a, a lunch huddle. Um, I'm suggesting the topic be, um, the budget. Um, have a couple of councils that would be interested in, you know, attending with me or.
Do we have an open, open meeting thing? Is it, can we only have two council meetings at those open sessions?
You're not making any, you're not making any decisions. It's just discussion. It's just discussion. It's to take citizen input, you know, on a more informal basis. I think that was something council was looking at at the strategic plan.
Do you think eleven o'clock is a good time?
Well, what, what time do you think?
I'm thinking more later at night because we do have people that work, but I don't know how many people will be coming.
Well, it's a council meeting night. We also have other committee meeting nights. I mean, I know I have stormwater that night right now, so I already have two meetings.
Well, let's try eleven o'clock. What, you know, see how it works.
And maybe like, you know, like maybe like we do them. I'm thinking more do them on council day. So maybe first meeting of the month, we do them before the council meeting, maybe at six, if people want to come for a night. And we do the second meeting of the month at noon, you know, so. You know, something like that may work.
I do like the alternating. That's good for both people that work days and people that work nights.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, reports as presented.
Second.
Want to say thank you to Luke on the park board. We appreciate your service. It was nice to meet you.
Aye. Aye.
Nothing tonight, Jim.
Uh, I just want to echo the citizens', uh, compliment about the streets being done. They're really good and they really have been doing an outstanding job. So thank you.
No, nothing for me tonight.
I just want to thank all the staff. I appreciate everything you guys do. And the more I'm involved with this, I realize you really got your work cut out for you. So thank you to everybody.
Be, before we break, Beth, um, what's, we were supposed to normally prove something for the budget tonight. Um, what's the, what's the new timeline? Do we know?
I'm hoping to have better idea of which direction the legislators are going. So I'm hoping to start the process at the next, um, city council meeting. So we would set the date for public hearing on the max levy on the twenty-eighth of February, hold the public hearing on the max levy, March fourth. March fourteenth, set the date for the budget on March fourteenth for public hearing and then have the public hearing on the budget on March twenty-eighth, but that's still subject. Um, the legislators are, um, hitting the property tax bills. You know, hot and, you know, heavy and, you know, with the sense that property taxes are too high and I don't, I don't know, you know, with those general statements. I understand people that, you know, I pay property taxes and you pay property taxes and yes, I can think that they're too high, but then I also think, okay, so when the snow doesn't get re, you know, removed or the street lights are out or, you know, things that the citizens want. And you have to take that away because, you know, you have to, you know, start lowering property taxes. I don't know where the, you know, the rubber, you know, hits the road there.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. It's like the state now is, they're taking away state funding. The only way we can make it up is property taxes. And then they're limiting how much we can charge in property taxes. It's, it's kind of crazy. I mean, it's.
Well, um, the only, the only, um, denominator that we really controlled, um, you know, the assessor sets the valuations, the state does the rollback. You know, the only thing we really could, you know, work with was the millage rate and they're starting on the millage rate where they're want to limit what you can, you know, charge on the millage too. So I don't know where it ends.
Are we still going to make then all the original required dates then that they haven't given us an exception to those dates yet, right?
They have proposed an exception that goes into April. So again, um, I, I believe the legislation that dealt with at least the rollback number, you know, they made the error in the rollback, which they originally gave cities the number of fifty-six percent on the rollback. And now they're rolling the rollback even further to fifty-four based on, um, what they did with the multi-residential category and they combined it with the residential. And that was an error on their part. Um, with that error alone, they are at basically that's going through to correct the error. And with that, um, counties have to go back in and give cities new evaluations. And they have a timeline with that that gives an April thirtieth, um, deadline date for filing your budget. So I think at a minimum we'll have to April thirtieth to deal with all this.
Uh, you have one for round table. Um, the newsletter, you've obviously noticed the redesign. Second one was out month, last month. We're trying to, certain areas of certain topics are going to be in the same place. We're highlighting local businesses. Just, you know, we're, we're trying to change it. So there was a section on the front page that I, that I had, you know, a few comments to. My, my intent is to roll that through the council then. So next one, we'll just rotate every six rounds. So whoever wants to take the next newsletter, it's welcome. If you can't decide amongst yourselves, I'll literally pull names out of a hat and then you'll have that, that short column for any message you want. So.
How many, how, how high is the stack of newsletters that we mail out? Maybe we should just do those electronically.
Well, the difference in them is the advertising pays for it. You know? Yeah. Well, we don't do them with, they, they get sent down to, uh, we don't mail it.
It's all presorted on the, on the newsletter, but, and Jim's right, we, the advertising basically pays for the mailing of that. And you know, at least, you know, old school on the newsletter is, at least we know, they decide to throw it in the garbage or not, you know, at least we know every house has gotten one and.
Then he goes recycling bin and, and to Joe at the same time.
I know mine goes in the recycle bin because I've already read it like five times before it, you know.
Newsletter isn't. Uh, but anyhow, that, that column is available. So if, if you guys know somebody wants to take the, the, the spring newsletter, great. If not, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but I, I, we just, again, we're looking for consistency between newsletters. It wasn't helter skeltered, just, you know, we had certain topics, we cover certain locations, the, you know, the format changed. We incorporated our, our branding that we had, you know, paid for many years ago. The branding now is in, in there and consistent. So, um, when it comes time to write the newsletter, I'll reach out to the five of you and if you can't decide, I'll, I'll draw names. I'm, I'm not trying to pick anybody or favorite. I'm just saying, I thought, thought it was a nice idea that everybody got a chance to give a short message. You know, it's up to you. I'm not editing it. I'm not, I'm not doing like censoring it. It, it's, it's yours. Okay, that's all I have. Beth, what do you, you have anything?
What I needed, thanks.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone.
Valentine's Day.